Mayor DeJulio.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Councilmember Rock.
Present.
Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Burkin.
Here.
Councilmember Weddell.
I entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Solu.
Second.
We move to second. Most favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed. Council passes. Thank you. Please rise to the presentation colors.
Yes, okay.
It's perfect.
All board, start. Color guard, up. Ready, face.
Aye. Twenty two leaders just.
King of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carefree. Colors. Ready, cut, order. Colors. Ready, cut, ready, face.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Please be seated. I would like to thank the Naval Junior Army ROTC and Port Angeles High School for presenting colors tonight. And I have some of the cadets come down. I have proclamation to read.
Okay, I have a proclamation in recognition of Port Angeles High School, NJROTC, Rough Rider Company. Whereas the Navy Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, the NJROTC program was established at Port Angeles High School in 1996 to motivate students to navigate through their four years of high school successfully and to their pursuit of higher education after graduation. And whereas throughout the year, students learn a variety of life skills through curriculum emphasizing leadership development and individual discipline, continually promoting the benefits of living healthy lives. And whereas the members of the NJROTC not only focus their attention on becoming responsible students, but responsible citizens as well, the cadets show their duty to community and country through their average yearly donation and 3,000 hours of community service. And whereas in addition to their public service to the community, under the leadership of Captain Jonathan Pickler and Master Chief Jeffrey Perry, the cadets have earned several notable recognitions. And whereas the group has earned the title of distinguished unit for its ninth year in a row. And whereas in 2015, four ROTC four-year scholarships were awarded. And whereas the NJROTC earned the title of state champions at the Northwest Drill and Rifle Conference. Now therefore, I am DeJulio Mayor on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles to hereby recognize the efforts of the 2014, 2015 Naval Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, Rough Rider Company, for their exceptional performance in state championships. Most of all, we acknowledge that the efforts of these dedicated young men and women, not only to their company, but to the community as well. Congratulations. I understand that you're entitled to leave at high school, so if you need to leave to go see your homework, you certainly are excused. Thank you all for coming and what you do for our community.
Do we have a public comment section? Okay, we'll open public comments first. Dave Nevery. Nevery. Nevery.
My name is David Nevery at 1014 Georgiana Street. I'm here to talk about a project proposal for Georgiana Park. And I appreciate your opportunity to speak here. For the record, I just wanted to state that we are the Nevery family, myself, person, and Roland are the caretakers of Georgiana Park. We have been since the first about three and a half years that we've lived there by both the park. We can pick up the trash, take care of it. We put Roland's name on it, keep four and a half. So it's best that. The other thing is, is that Corey Delacott is Roland's uncle. So I just wanted to make sure for the record that I want there to be no speculation on the issue of nepotism in regards to his. As for my wife. I approached the CEO of OMC, Eric Lewis, at their open house on April 16. And I plainly put to him that I wanted OMC to provide a new playground facility at Georgiana Park with a rough estimate of about $150,000. I told him to prove to me, the city and the neighborhood, the neighborhood that they work in, that we live in, that they would not in fact approach the city in five years from now when they needed another parking lot. And if you look at the size of the part of Caroline that we just vacated and the alley, it's about the size of the park. So I took that idea and I ran with it. And here it is that I want to present today. And I am going to take it as quick as I can. I appreciate it. This is what we envisioned Georgiana Park to look like. And I don't have a easel and I apologize, but I'm just going to actually leave it there for you to look at. I have one for each of you. You guys got set a digital copy?
Thanks for the email.
Thank you for the one back. Yes, I have one. Also have one for, thank you. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. There you go. This one for the clerk. And if you could hand this back to Mr. Delacott, Director Delacott. I have two copies for the PDF and protocol. If they like it. Okay, I'm just going to move really quickly. Georgiana Park and OMC are synonymous with each other in history and more importantly, in the hearts and minds of the citizens of Powell County and the city of Port Angeles, that which they both serve. They've been around since the 50s. And being a volunteer caretaker of Georgiana Park, I see very well that if not I, then who? If not now, then when? I feel my putting forth this proposal is to me utilizing the only opportunity we have as a community to get this park, to reinvest in this park. And that's pretty much what I'm asking them to do is just take the opportunity that you're using to build that new building and reinvest in your next door neighbor, which is the park. My declaration is simple. The equipment at Georgiana Park is outdated and worn out. It should be replaced and enhanced to reflect the changing landscape. I do not have the money to replace it and neither does the city. While it may seem to some inappropriate to ask for money from a public funded enterprise, it is still in fact an enterprise with the responsibility to do what is right for the community. Enhancing the park at Georgiana with inclusive features and upgrade will reflect a reaffirmation towards the historical relationship that OMC and Georgiana Park have. Sissy word. Sorry, I said that there are better solutions out there. I think that this solution is the best for all of us as a community in the long run. Obviously, I'm going to skip past this, but I've had the conversation with the director and we already know you don't have the money to fix it. So I mean, but I was at the Port Angeles Business Association meeting yesterday. I sat in the back and waited for Eric Lewis as keynote speaker. He came through. We finally face to face talked and he said, I like this idea. I like this proposal. Let's push it to the board. What he said was, of course, the second thing that he said was, what is the city? What can the city do? I would like to see the city come forward in some way. Now, what is needed in the construction standpoint is from a bonded contractor is the site survey, demolition, site prep, the standard stuff that went through a machine apart. Basically, what I'm asking you is this section of the work could be put forth as a goodwill gesture by the city with an equal effort from OMC and a hospital, neighborhood residents to create a cooperative of volunteers to help where needed. And I would be more than happy to spirit head that. I actually know some doctors who work at the hospital would be more than happy to spirit head that half of it put together. We come up with a good team of volunteers and help out and do most of the work, a lot of the manual labor work. The bid came in and pretty much exactly what I expected. It's $146,000 and that's total right now, but it's still vague. It's still, it's not very vague. It's just, it's still a little vague. So I actually just had a meeting with a general contractor this morning. He gave me a rough estimate bid for the concrete work at about $20,000. So that puts us, if they came up with $100,000, you come up with $50,000 that puts towards labor, then we can make this a reality. Okay, now I understand $50,000 with a labor just doesn't come out of air. I realize that. You have to account for it somewhere. Now, if we can get this playground built, we have to look at, and that's where you got the eight pages of, okay, all playgrounds built today require a minimum standard. All playgrounds built today require minimum access. The most important thing, all playgrounds built today need to be for everyone. And in this park, and right now, I'm just going to skip past all of the rest of it and just show you the quick, the quickness of it. This structure right here is five to 12 and it replaces the existing and only structure there. Over here is a four, is a two bay swing set that replaces the single bay that's there. The one chair is an ADA compliant. It's actually the newest style with just a flip up, set them in. It's way easier to deal with than the other ones. This specific structure right here is two to five, the focus group, a very particular focus group that was not afraid to tell me the truth about what was going on. Do not build a park without a two to five. Do not. The clubhouse, very specific. If you look in the paperwork, quiet space for all kids. And there is also actual wheelchair access into the clubhouse. And then over here, this is the one key factor that actually is geared towards everybody. And it's a musical feature, harmony free notes. And it's add all of this together, put in a level right off the sidewalk. We're using turf stone as an environmental, instead of pouring concrete, put it all nice and level all the way out there and everything's level. And then there's really good, it's not handicap 100% in the chamber. But it is handicap friendly, okay? And it's more friendly for everybody. Now, you take this and you look at it and then you compare it to the $15 million new medical office building. They go hand in hand. Actually, the colors are designed for them, with their specific. I actually focused through those colors with four and a half girls. And they love it. I thank you very much. I very much appreciate your time. Have a hundred.
I would ask that you and Cory get together and talk about some opportunities for the city to participate in this. I think it's a great idea. And if the city manager would sit the same staff, they can bring back something that council can act on. So thank you for your presentations.
Thank you. That'd be awesome.
Jim Moran.
I'm Jim Moran and I live at 1710 West Fourth Street, Port Angeles. And I'm the president of the Port Angeles Regional Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to take this opportunity to kind of bring you up to date what's happening in, with the chamber. As you know, there's been a few exciting things that happened in Port Angeles in the last couple of months. By the way, I hope everybody is moving today. Just a quiet reminder there. First of all, based on the year to date information we've got so far, the room pack, occupancy, web visits, visitor center guests, they're all ahead of last year, which as you know, was a record year to begin with. The windfall that we're expecting, and I've seen some preliminary numbers and we'll have a quarterly report for the city manager at the end of this quarter, which will be up in July. Based on the visit of the Polar Explorer, however you feel about drilling, it was, it was an excellent economic opportunity for Port Angeles. And we expect that to be reflected in the numbers. The Port Angeles Downtown Association is in the process of moving through the visitor center building. And that's going to create a closer opportunity for us to work with the downtown association. We're finalizing a memorandum of understanding. The details are being worked out between the two groups for the economies of scale that we talked about and have sought for such a long time that. By the way, the concerts on the pier will start next week. The bands have been selected. So hopefully, everybody will be coming out for that. Ride the Hurricane, the registrations for the Ride the Hurricane are way ahead of last year. So that event is also looking very good. And also, and most importantly, and this is going to be my job for pretty much the balance of the year, is we're in process, well, we started the process of looking for a new executive director. As you know, our executive director will be retiring at the end of this year. And so we have a selection committee in place. We've brought up timelines and by November 1st, we've hoped to present to the board of directors of the chamber, our selection for new executive director to start or to be in place on July, January 1, 2016. One last thing that I'd like to touch on, and that's a specific committee that we have in the chamber, and that's our veterans committee. Councilperson here is also a member of that. As you know, we're working on and we're gathering data to present to the Coast Guard to designate Port Angeles and possibly Clough County as Coast Guard cities. And so that's what we belong rather well. We've also, and I've proposed another project for us here. And you're hearing this for the first time and it's something that I want you to think about for the future. Across the bay resides a residence that's been with us for on and off for the last 50 years. She is coming to the end of her service career, she, her service life. In the next three to five years, she will be retired. And I'm talking about the Coast Guard Cutter active. The Coast Guard Cutters are usually at the end of their service career are decommissioned and sadly scrapped. We have asked the Public Affairs Officer of the Coast Guard to look into the possibility of moving the active at the end of her service life across the bay via permanent resident in Port Angeles as a museum ship and a tourist attraction. So we've begun that process and I will be bringing reports again. This is a three to five year project out, but I wanted to bring to your thoughts right now because this is something that wouldn't happen overnight. But with our new beach front or waterfront escalon and so forth, the Coast Guard Cutter active, who's been a friend of ours and a protector of ours for over 50 years, would be just a tremendous addition to our waterfront. And so I've been in that project and asked our veterans committee to begin the process of working with Coast Guard. It's not a guarantee. They may sell it because they need the money, but other than that, so anyway, I thank you for your time and I thank you for your service for our community.
Thank you. Jim.
Good evening. Eloise Callen, architect of the Insular Future. On April 27th of this year, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services formally lowered the concentration recommended for water fluoridation from an ex amount of 1.2 parts per million to an ex amount of seven tenths parts per million. Or did you get them? Forgot. Okay. You're getting a copy of what I'm telling you. This has also been given to your secretary except for exhibit four, which I added late this afternoon and handed her a copy of earlier. All right, we have this lowering of concentration in the water of fluoride as a formal action. Two major events set the stage for this. National Research Council Scientific Review of Drinking Water Standards for Fluoride, published in 2006, produced evidence supported even by those champions of fluoridation who sat on the committee authorizing this report. The traditional fluoride limits were too high. Dental fluorosis and increased risk of bone fracture in adults were native considerations. Exhibit one. This is page 87 from the NRC report and it quotes from a series of studies. For example, quote, with more severe forms of fluorosis, carries risk increases because of pain and loss of the outer enamel, unquote. And again, from another, another source on the same page, quote, severe mottling is as destructive to teeth as is dental caries, unquote. Too much fluoride damages teeth. The second event appeared at a CDC health conference in 2007 when Beltran and his coworkers unveiled a nationwide study of dental fluorosis. A startling 41% of teens, that's nationwide, 41% of them, were affected. This report is one generally accepted as evidence that large numbers of our children are being overdosed with fluoride. Exhibit two. This is page 49 from the same NRC report. This graph shows estimated contribution of fluoride from sources other than drinking water where water is fluoridated to the traditional one part per million. Foods, beverages, toothpaste contributes as much fluoride to the people as the water. And there are additional fluoride sources beyond what's in that particular graph. About 20% of all pharmaceuticals, for instance, contain fluoride. Since 1957, over 150 new ones have been added. Examples are Prozac, Lipitor, Cicroploaxin. And interestingly, a heavy smoker can inhale as much fluoride in a day as he gets from drinking uncoated water at eight tenths milligrams, being proposed to be seven tenths as a maximum. Now, exhibit three. This presents results of laboratory tests done on foods you might find in your local grocery. Note, the Lucerne 2% milk does not reflect the low fluoride in natural cow milk. Probably part of its processing could be fluoridated drinking water has been added. A relatively recent addition to our fluoridated world is self chiral fluoride used as a pimigrant, a pimigrant to treat warehouses and storage areas. It's being used to replace metal bromide because it does not defeat the ozone layer. You might look at exhibit four, which I added just today in connection with this one because it gives you a big listing of all of the things that may be directly fumigated after harvest by sulfur chloride. Food passing through warehouses or storage areas becomes an accidental recipient. It is also used directly on nuts, prunes, raisins, peanut, wheat, rice, corn, herbs, spices, and other foods, which you will see in that listing at exhibit four. Federal agencies are struggling to put the best possible face on the need to reduce fluoride exposure. Their news release repeats baseless claims of efficacy to stop tooth decay. We'll give you more on that another day. The reduction in fluoride fails to prevent severe fluorosis, expected now to occur in at least one in every 200 children. And that is with a reduced level in water. The poor blacks and Hispanics are affected at higher rates. And of course, are the most vulnerable, these able to pay for reservations. There's no excuse to continue more fluoridation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all who have signed up this evening to speak to the council. I will give you an opportunity. Is anyone else who would like to speak to the council who did not sign up this evening? Okay, I've seen any in the public comment period.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could make any comments, please?
Sure.
As kind of note for the general public, most of you may have not ever seen our list of policies and procedures for working on the council. But there is a provision in that procedure manual that allows council members to respond to public testimony or public comment time period as I'm doing right now during the meeting. But for any of you, and a lot of you have been here on a pretty regular basis, you'll, you will have noticed that very, very seldom do we ever say anything. That we just kind of keep quiet. And sometimes it appears that maybe that's been misconstrued. And I just wanted to take a moment and point out that one of the reasons I've kept quiet, and I think why some of the other members do too, is basically out of respect for the time and the efforts and the courage that somebody has to get up and talk to us. It seems that public comment time is a time that's really important. It's a time for you to talk to us and for us to listen to you. And for us to come back and respond and perhaps jump in on a comment, that puts us in a position of having the last word because it's not a debate time. And you go back to your seat feeling like maybe we took advantage of the opportunity. So with that being said, I've heard that some members of the community have taken our silence for kind of a stance of not caring what you have to say or not wanting open communication or transparency. And I really want you to know that just couldn't be further from the truth. We really value and welcome your feedback and comments. The mayor and council continually encourage us that. We encourage that and receive your comments through not only time here, but through countless emails and last phone calls. I can't count the number of people that have come to my office and sat and had coffee and chatted about stuff. And we really value that time. So I would like to make sure that, you know, that doesn't get put aside. I'm saddened if we've communicated or if I've communicated any wrong impression, you know, through our silence, but it really has been from our perspective, out of the time, an effort to respect you as a speaker. And I would just kind of sum this up by saying, please keep your comments coming. We really, really value that input and it's important to us and the community. And encourage your friends to come in and make comments too because everybody's. And encourage your friends to come in and make comments too because everybody's opinion is valued. So that's why I want to share.
Thank you. Okay, we're at 6:30. I move over to the public hearings versus capital facilities plan and transportation program.
We will have Tess Aggison will be providing the council with a brief report. She's filling in for Byron. So I have a few.
Yeah, it's warming up.
Okay. We're going to do a very short presentation, having gone through this on May 19th in rather detailed format and just wanting to be addressing the 2016 expenses as those will be the ones that we'll be going forward with budgeting next. If you have any comments or questions after, on future years, then by all means, we'll be available with questions. And I do have other copies of the presentation if anybody wants them.
It's down below. It's all set up.
I work with all of the directors and the city manager very closely to put together the capital facilities plan. All of the projects go through a process where they're vetted by the each director and prioritized as well as compared to our cost of service plan for affordability, our budget, the items are incorporated. As we're going through the plan, we are amending our budget for the current year as well as proposing for the next year. We build all of these into our long range plan and also tie them into our comprehensive plan. So it's quite a, it incorporates all of these documents and it becomes a living document. So anytime there are any changes, we incorporate those throughout all four of these areas so that we stand par with each other. The actual documentation is located at the city of Port Angeles online. And like I mentioned before, we had a detailed discussion on May 19th and it can be rather lengthy because we have hundreds of projects that we're looking at as we go forward. So rather than go through each of those, we just wanted to go over what we do when we're looking at the process so that you can understand what we do as staff and what the council gets from us for approval. We did a few things different this year. Last year when we put together the CFP, we did not include maintenance costs and depreciation costs. We wanted to include those because as we build more and more facilities, the cost of operating and owning those also go up. So we are now estimating our going forward maintenance costs as well as labor and material savings if we have them or increased costs. All the ongoing costs and recurring large costs for studies, permits, and planning are also included in what we call the maintenance section. We take into consideration a number of factors and like I mentioned before, we have taken a look at what our average spending for governmental is over the last five years and try and stay within that framework. And in the CFP and TIB, TIP document we're presenting this year, we are actually going to be spending much less than what we have on a five-year average. Utilities are only allowed to spend what we've included in our cost of service study so that we don't increase rates to our customers based on new facilities or replacements. So we're trying to keep everything confined to keep our rates low and, but yet, keep everything in a good working order. This time, we have no new debt was allowed or even considered. We've had some large expenditures in the last few years and we are definitely trying to get away from a debt funded capital plan. And we are only included projects that have a reasonable anticipated revenue source. So if we have grants, we will include those in the plan and have matching fund for those. If we do not anticipate that we'll actually get a grant, it is put into a parking lot to show the need for the build of a facility or repair or replacement of a facility, but the fact that we can't actually afford it at this time. All of those that are in the parking lot can be moved up in priorities if we get a grant or get some outside funding as made available. So we have broken the capital facility plan into two components this year. We have the transportation improvement plan, which is a requirement by state law. We have to complete this and let the state know what we're going to be spending over the next six years. This is due to them by June 30th, so that's why we always have the facility plan and transportation plan discussed in the May and June timeframe. There's a definite cutoff on when we have to report to the state. Our transportation plan for 2016 is about just under a million and five. And as you can see, the majority of the funding is coming from outside grants from the state of Washington or federal agencies. Utilities and general fund and donations make up the rest of the contribution into This is just a graphic to show you where our spending is on our capital facilities plan, which is separate from the transportation improvement plan. You can see that the majority of our costs is again going to be the combined sewer project, which should be completing early in 2017 with just a very small amount of spending in 17. So we're interested to see that complete. We have additional wastewater plant repairs that need to happen, like a new roof and some of the pumping material and new gates and things like that that are also included Most of our revenue spending, our revenue funding is coming from reserves for the CSO. We have been building reserves to spend on that project for a number of years. We will be using some utility reserves for all of the other utility projects. And as you can see, we're only spending 260,000, just over 260,000 for, from the general fund, just under 600,000 for grants and the other funds which include rate lodging tax, rate and lodging tax are just over 100,000. I also wanted to mention that we will be using the remaining bond proceeds from the 2010 bonds to fund projects using rates for funding. So we had 1.6 million left in electric, nearly a million in each in water and wastewater. I'm just wondering if anybody has any questions or comments or concerns. Our directors are available to answer any questions if you have any on specific projects or anything else.
Perhaps just a little bit more explanation, please, with regards to the last slide on the remaining 2010 bond funding. What was the original source of that bond and why is it that we have that much left?
We have, in 2010, we took a bond out for a variety of different projects, the majority of which was for the AMI project, which was canceled over a year ago. And we have a requirement in our bond documents to use that for capital facilities or capital projects only, and they have to be used in the fund that they were borrowed from. So we can't take the money and use it for like a general fund project or information services or any other fund. So the majority of the funds were spent for AMI, but there were other water and wastewater projects that were also funded as well as electric projects at that time. And we finished all the other projects and this was money left over that was unspent from those 2010 bonds.
Yeah, I was going to follow up on that also. So what this is, is these are funds that we can use to buy down future rate increases in utilities.
Essentially, that's correct.
Right, so this is very good.
Yeah, we have kind of a heavy workload because of this bond money and the need to spend it quickly so that we...
We can, we would love to do that because we would love to buy down future rate increases.
Yes.
Could we not use these funds to just pay off bonds?
We have a requirement to spend the money. If we are not able to refund the bonds for a certain period of time, I believe it was a 10-year refund on them. So we can't actually refund them until 2020 at the earliest.
I guess with following up on that question, are we saving any of this money at all so that we can just at 2020 be able to put a big jump back?
When you look at the actual book, the preliminary CFP that's online and also that was handed out during the council UAC joint meeting, there's a cash flow that shows how much is being retained for future projects. And we are still trying to build up that balance as directed by council so that we have money available for future large projects rather than taking any additional debt on. So the CFP book that you have will show a comparison between how much depreciation we had because our guideline was to try and build half depreciation at the end of 2019. And it'll show what percentage we have of coverage at that point. And we're well on our way to saving money in all of those areas.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Tess. Okay, we will open up the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak regarding capital facilities plan or transportation improvement plan, please come to the microphone, give your name and address. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come to the microphone, give your name and address. If there are opportunities, anyone who wishes to speak, come to the microphone, name and address. Not seen anybody. We continue the public hearing to the June 16th, is it June 16th meeting?
Yes.
To the June 16th meeting, there will be the resolution. The resolution of the city council of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the capital facilities plan for the years 2016 to 2021. Mr. Mayor, could I make a comment?
Sure. I just wanted to say that this has been a major focus. This is my sixth capital facilities plan and transportation improvement plan that I'll be reviewing. And in the past, I've been concerned that we've been funding our capital improvements through rate increases of utilities. And I believe this is the first time where we're being within our means, not using rates to fund some of the capital improvements. I actually believe that it's appropriate to use those bond issues funds to pay for continuing what capital improvements we need to have in the next year and at the same time, use the rates to build up the reserve and gives us the flexibility to keep our rates as they existed. During this entire six-year period of time, we've been in a recession which still exists here in Port Angeles, unfortunately. And I believe this is the first time that I can easily support this facility plan and the transportation improvement plan, and I appreciate the direction that has been taken. I've been for six years trying to keep these debts from impacting on our utility rates and I can see that it's finally arrived, so I'm very pleased.
I think we actually began this process last year, didn't we?
Well, we did. And one of the things that we did a couple of years ago is we moved the CFP planning process. It involves all departments, but the actual document itself and assembling all the information was moved from the public works department to the finance department. And one of the reasons that we did that is pretty much what council member Collins is talking about. We took a different approach on how we fund or look at the funding for our capital projects. We started with the general fund budget and we went back and took an average over five years and looked at what our average spending was. And we started with a financial sideboard using that average as a starting place, not building the projects and then funding the projects, but actually having some sideboards in place. And then we looked at the projects that we can do within what our average spending was. And that was during the difficult times which we anticipate, you know, the economy's not going to improve overnight. But on the larger side of the house, which is the utility side of the house, we looked at our cost of service analysis and what we already had factored in for that cost of service analysis for the projects and use that as a financial sideboard rather than building the projects and then trying to fund through if we needed rate increases. And the departments did a great job of span within those parameters. In fact, as Tess said, the majority of them are actually below the financial sideboards that we set up. So I'm very pleased with the work that everybody did on that. And...
All right, we continue that public hearing. Let's move on to the next one, which is the priority setting resolution.
Thank you, Eric, our council. As you remember, during the last council meeting, staff did provide a report to the council on the priority setting process, going back even through the history that prompted the priority setting process as part of our long-range strategic financial plan. At that time, we did also have the first reading of the resolution and a public hearing was conducted. And tonight, we have the second reading of our setting resolution. This is the second public hearing and staff is recommending adoption after the council's had a chance to take in public comment, discuss it, and go from there.
Okay, so we'll move on to public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding the public priority setting resolutions? Come to the microphone, name and address, please.
My name is Larry Hewitt, president, CEO of First Federal. My address is 105 West 8th Street. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I was here several weeks ago when you started this process and wanted to give you my encouragement in listening to the council's concerns over the budgets. The prioritization process is very important to determine where spending will take place. We cannot be everything to everyone, no matter what our organization is. I would encourage you to continue with this process and adopt the prioritization that you've set forward. Some people have been higher on the priority, some of the programs and processes. some of the programs and processes, and some are lower. And that's part of the process. And I commend you for taking those steps to say what we do as a first priority and what we do maybe later on down the line. So, I encourage you and thank you for the opportunity to review the process.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Members of council and staff and tech guys. I hope somewhere on your cards, as you will this, Dale Wilson, Field Box 817, Port Angeles, 98362. I hope that some of you will put on your cards these ambitious plans to create a reliable supply of water. All of these plans that you're building are going to be for involved if we don't have a reliable supply of water since the dams are coming down. And I might add, if you read the email that I sent you earlier, the Elba River is 25% below its historic low for this date. And I don't hear anybody talking about what we're going to do in August and September when the Elba gets to one of the critical points that it has reached in nine out of the last 15 years. And when you're setting priorities, I certainly hope you'll put water, a reliable source of water, somewhere on there. We've got $50 million invested in getting the water away from the homes, and we need to spend some money on getting water to the homes. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else who wishes to speak? Third final question, anyone else who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Let me read the resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting program and service priorities for fiscal years 2015 and 2016. If you have some other comments or questions?
I've got some comments. When you read this, you know, something that had bothered me the first time I read it, I was like, I couldn't find my paper on it. So, let me read this again for this package. On page G13, and it was the group two, "The limitation of quality of life." And it said, "Programs and services focused on enhancing the quality of life for residents." And I think the part that bothered me is that quality of life is really important, and I feel like public safety is one of those things that enhances public, that quality of life. And I know we put public safety, you know, maintain public safety and maintain our infrastructure. And so, and so our mid-level thing focused on enhancing quality of life. I know where you're trying to get to is to, because recreation and art and education are part of quality of life. But then I was feeling like, well, so is public safety and maintaining infrastructure and support services. So, I'm wondering if we can just cross out the quality of life part and say programs and services focused on enhancing, whether we do recreation, art and education for residents. Because I think that's where you're trying to get to, that it's actually some of the experience, you know, some of the nice to haves but not critical. And we put some of it as to recreational programs for youth and adults, environmental awareness and art. So, some of those things are not critical. They're, let's say, nice to have. But except, I said, the part of the quality of life part.
So, I would propose that reads, that would read?
I have a program and services focus focusing on recreational programs for youth and adults and environmental awareness and the arts. So, basically crossing out a lot of that. So, yeah, so programs and services focused on, recreational programs for youth and adults, I guess such as recreational programs for youth and adults, including environmental awareness and the arts. That way, it takes out that quality of life bit. I'm sorry, I was picky, but it just really, I kept reading, and I knew it was really bothering me.
I would like to keep maintenance of public parks.
Okay.
And that I'd like to put in.
Okay. So, programs and services, including maintenance of public parks, recreational programs for young adults and environmental awareness and the arts.
I just can't see who out there supports that suggestion.
But you would eliminate any standard?
I wouldn't eliminate anything, just I would take out quality of life, because...
And that's what I was just saying.
Or the residential services.
Yeah.
You may not really get the gist.
Whole sentence, sorry.
So, what you would say is programs and services focused on?
I think I agree that...
So, you would eliminate or enhancing quality of life for residents and visitors, two pronounces. That whole section would be eliminated.
Yeah. It would be programs and services, including. So, forget the focus on enhancing the quality of life for residents and visitors.
I wonder how that compares or affects the actual list that was detailed? Because I understand this is more of a synopsis of what we've already said.
I don't believe that would have any impact on the outcome of the legislative results. As long as, and what I have, and just make sure I have them right, programs and services, including maintenance of public parks, recreational programs for young adults, other quality of life areas, including environmental awareness of the arts. Or we just say other areas, including environmental awareness and arts.
I would just say, so recreational programs for youth and adults, comma, environmental awareness, comma, and the arts. Because that way, it's, you can just take other qual- quality of life areas, including.
Okay, great. What would the council?
So, say, programs and services, including maintenance of public parks, recreational programs for the youth and adults, environmental awareness and the arts. So, includes everything that we said. It just takes out the quality of life bit, because I think public safety and all those other things are part of the quality of life.
I guess I might state that that would be something that could perhaps eliminate community improvements that benefit residents and visitors. And I think that's something that would be important to consider as part of that change. I think it would narrow the language down to a more park, community-focused statement that presently probably represents more of a community-based approach.
Do we want to add community improvements? I mean, that'd be fine. It included here is a list of recreational programs for youth and adults, community programs.
What if we add programs and services for residents and visitors, Port Angeles, including maintenance of public parks? Because I think it's important to read. I'd like to leave in residents and visitors, Port Angeles, because it's all, they're all very important. And I think that's something we discussed as part of our decisions. So, we, programs and services for residents and visitors. Yeah, so we take off on the first paragraph, take out the focus on enhancing quality of life, and just take out one, two, three, four, five, six, seven words in the first sentence. And then adding programs and services for residents and visitors, Port Angeles, including maintenance of public parks.
That would be fine.
I'm not really sure what it is about the words quality of life that is a concern or a problem. We seem to get a lot of feedback from our residents saying, please do things to increase the quality of life, because that's why people live here.
I guess, pardon me, that quality of life, putting it as a mid-level priority, to me, is a top, high priority. And it's showing in the mid-level. And the quality of life would be the maintaining public safety is a high-quality-of-life issue. So, that's reason, it kind of seems to focus at that mid-level. And I, it's more important to me than mid-level. And I'd say, you know, for me, high-quality-of-life things are the safety, the infrastructure and the services are.
So, what you're saying is it's all three groups, all this full section of groups, and all of our business is quality of life issue? So, therefore, I would just put the sacred Mr. Hayes and Chris others into somewhere within volume of awareness that you can, which is, all this is about the quality of life. And it's all there.
But the title above that sentence, if you go back of page to G12, to the title above, it says beautification and quality of life. That's the title above them. So, I think quality of life should be in there, and it is in there. But if you change that to maybe beautification and community improvements, we can, I would like to leave in the heading, quality of life, there. I don't know.
We've had this in front of us for quite some time. And it's really difficult at the last moment to try to wordsmith this in a way that we're all going to feel comfortable with. And I think if we wanted to wordsmith this, we should have started a couple of weeks ago or even before that. I think the headings are intended to categorize the various priorities that we all went through deciding. And so, I don't think we're eliminating quality of life to just parks and stuff. And as much as I don't have any objections to wordsmithing it, I don't think we're eliminating anything. I just think that it's a little unfortunate to try to wordsmithing this at this moment in time. I'm more than happy if it reads programs and services focused on community improvements, including, and then the list, maintenance of public parks, recreation programs for youth and adults, environmental awareness, and the arts. I think that that accommodates what Mr... Anyways, I just think that it's a struggle to try to make everybody happy at this point. So, let me read it again. Programs and services focused on community improvements, including maintenance of public parks, recreational programs for youth and adults, environmental awareness and the arts. You know, I appreciate that Mr. West decided whether adding word community improvements in there broadened his understanding of that policy. But I think that the whole idea of the highest mid-level and lowest priorities were names that were used to categorize how we, how those particular priorities were written. And I don't want to lose quality of life, but I don't think it needs to be in the specific.
And I do apologize for the lateness of this, but it has been bothering me, and I finally, I figured out why. So, sometimes you have to order.
I'd be a little concerned to take out quality of life because of feeling that the public safety aspect is more important. But then we'd have to look right up to the first paragraph of group two, which says, "Public Safety." So, if quality of life shouldn't be there because it's part of public safety, then that public safety thing that's already there probably shouldn't be there either. And I'm not certain if we're accomplishing anything by making any changes.
I guess, I said, my preference would be to avoid him just doing that if possible, but...
Does anyone else object to quality of life in ways written for residents and visitors of Port Angeles? I really don't object to that. Objection, really don't object to that.
I mean, I know it's late, so in it, and I will, I guess, if everybody does not seem to have a problem with it, and I'm the only one that seems to have a problem with it, I will let this go. But I just, I just think we would do better.
I would like to compliment Councilmember Brooke for being such a thorough reader and study. She studies the material to great extent, and I think that's one of her great strengths she adds to the council. So, thank you for doing that. I prefer not wordsmithing at the last moment, but I know we'll have many further opportunities to have you add your input to many, many more documents. I look forward to that.
Somehow, people do this every year.
So, we're going to be alone. Thank you for your comments. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting program and service priorities for fiscal years 2015 and '16. This is Tess's pleasure.
I will be adopted as red.
Second.
Move to second, any further discussion? Hearing all those affairs, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, say.
Another comment? Sure. On our dais, we've, Councilmember Brooke, added our strategic plan for City of Port Angeles, for City of Port Angeles, excuse me, and the Olympic Development Council. And it seems to me that's one of the ways we could begin to address some of the wordsmithing issues is if we were to better articulate our own strategic plan along these lines. I know I was at the Olympic Development Council when they went through that exercise, and it was a fairly well-directed exercise of developing a strategic plan. So, just as a way to move in the right direction, whether it's about quality of life or anything else, I would encourage us to try to develop something like this as an adjunct.
I guess since you brought this up, I've, I was going to sneak with that for course, but I can do it now. The pages that you have in front of you are strategic plans that took about half a day of the group meeting. So, it was a good four hours, solid hours. If they had a four counts, they might have added two extra hours. So, it's not a long, pro-practish experience. It's short, and the woman who runs it is available in the fall. And I think this is something that we should really take a good look at. It's concise, it's a living document. You can, you know, look at it, it's not a huge expenditure of time. And I really do believe that we need to set up priorities. And I must admit, I was jealous. Square has mission, vision, goals for 2014 and '15. Now, we don't have that. And I really, so, I would encourage us to really get this done.
Move back up to the agenda. Any items you place on this agenda?
We do not have any.
If you can set the agenda. All we have is the bills this month. Spender list from May 9th, 2015 to May 22nd, 2015, in the amount of $1,630,943.92.
Has moved as red?
Move to second, any further discussion? All those affairs, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, say. Okay, the last item is the Calum County Economic Development Council contract.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this evening before you have a draft 2015 Economic Development Council contract with the City of Port Angeles. I have placed on your dais a correction to page J8 of the work plan. There was an error in the work plan that reordered the outcomes to holes one and three, and we corrected that in the sheet that you have on your dais. It simply reorders that, puts that under the correct, the outcomes under the correct holes. So, I do apologize for that. I do want to make, or remind council that the Economic Development Council has been in a transition, and they have transitioned to new bylaws that results in more of a private organization as opposed to a public organization. That's a transition that they anticipate to take some part. And similarly, the City of Port Angeles has presented to you today... And similarly, the city quarters have presented to you today a transitional contract that would essentially continue city funding for one additional year, at which time we would see the EDC implement the associated work plan with the contract. It's important to note that we did work with the Port Angeles, as well as Collin County, on putting together an approved work plan as compared to the one that the EDC originally presented to us. And I can tell you that the port is also moving forward with a similar work plan, and it's one that has, has been approved and reviewed by the Collin County EDC Board at this point in time. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions on the proposed contract at this time, as well as I think it's important to note that Councilmember Collins, as representative of council, on the EDC Board, and has been also very effective in helping us work through some of the contracting and planning related issues.
I'd just like to add that I think that the EDC is anticipating, you know, how the city is reprioritizing, and I've been acting in that direction. And I think that this is a good transition, and I think it anticipates where we're likely to be headed with the two thousand sixteen budget decisions, and fairly recommend this to the council.
To make a note again, is, would they notify anybody to the council office itself? And discuss this matter?
Anywhere, yes.
So was there any reason why they should be here?
Well, I'd love, I'd love them to, I'd question the energy bar. They were notified.
Well, but you're happy, just before my turn started during the temporary time period, the topic of funding some other organizations in the area was thoroughly discussed and vetted. And I think the decisions that were made at the time, how should I say this? Probably gave pause to some of those organizations and helped them realize that they need to make some serious changes in their methods and progress and accountability. And I think that we're at that stage with EDC. I think that they are on the verge of some high likelihood of positive changes. And I hope that they're successful in those, because I don't feel that there would be any further money coming from the council if we don't see some good success.
I have a copy of the Collin County EDC quarterly report, dated April thirtieth, and there are many EDC activities that were initiated by the EDC team, talking about two hundred and fifty new jobs being created in two thousand fifteen, hoteliers looking at this, Seattle-based boat builder, exciting new specialty restaurant coming. So they are working hard on behalf of Collin County, and I think this is a very positive proposal. We need to support the transition because economic development for Collin County is economic development for Corning Angeles. We've made the commitment in our budget, and I'm, I'm going to be voting yes to support the two thousand fifteen contract that EDC did.
I'd love to see actually a little bit more detail of this thing. It's much better than it's ever been. I didn't hear of that, but I don't think it goes far enough. One of the things that's very big with this area of focus, I know that they've got three trade centers, so it's advanced manufacturing and tourism. But I think they're also neglecting the fact that one of the largest growing areas we have are sort of services. I mean, I know that that's not, you know, maybe as fun as some of these others, but it's a growing area, it's more economic development in this area. And for them to just, I'd like, it seems a little bit odd, it just surprises me. The other area that I'd like to see some changes is in their goal number one, to make at least sixty business retention visits. It says that the outcome, it says create from the B R E visit form, a report to the partners, general information about the visits. And that's about what it says, general information about the visits. I'd really like to see real specifics on this, like, you know, rating how well these businesses feel that they're doing, how many years they've been in business, how can we help, you know? Are there policies that they can identify that are barriers that we have or not? And also, what would they need to expand those businesses? So I'd like to see those specific, at least those four specific questions asked of each of the businesses, so then we actually have some data to move forward. Did they find some policies that need to be changed? You know, do we know what, if businesses in general need to expand? What is the market? If we don't start doing some major looking into how businesses are doing, how well they're doing, and what they need, we're not gonna know how to help them, you know, for city policies. So I appreciate this contract because it's way better, but I really wanna see that detail added. So I'm gonna hold and say no until I get a little bit more on this contract. Besides that, I think it's a great effort, and I know this is would also be our last year of funding them, but I wanna see more specifics. Sorry.
Councilmember Brooke, I will share with you the quarterly report. In fact, the reason for the visits to the businesses is to talk to them personally, find out what their needs are, and share with them the tax benefits and what's available to help them, help them grow. So that's the purpose of the visits, so they can sit down and give them knowledge of tax benefits and grant funding that the business was not aware of. So they help them grow, and that's, that's what they use the visits for.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, but I know that's when, you know, they were here presented, they were again, it's, yes, we'll share some information with them, but it wasn't specific as to, okay, are you going to identify, you know, what's specific is, how can, you know, what policies have gotten in your way? What were good, what were bad? What do you need as a business to stand? We really need to help the businesses.
That's what they're doing. That's specifically what the visits are asking.
One of the things we tried to do with the county and port was come up with a work plan that we called the, so there was some buy-in by all of those organizations. And if you read the last sentence in that outcome, it says, "That gained in jobs," and this is the business. And this council was concerned, and they'd asked the EDC to actually look at whether they were creating jobs. So that's a pretty big specific right there, and that's right there in that same intersection. And they're not shy about it, because you can tell from their report. They think they're going to be able to create jobs, and that would be the real focus of what is being accomplished in two thousand fifteen at the EDC. But I think, again, working with our partners, I think it's not the time to try to do too much of wordsmithing on a work plan that's already been reviewed by everybody, including the EDC. So I appreciate your thoughts on it, but I would urge us to vote for it the way it's been presented.
I think this is just coming back, I did notice there that that jobs, oh, good, we got one specific, but it was just one specific, so I'm gonna push for more on this one. Sorry.
This is, we're out here, this is a rather aggressive work plan. If they're gonna bring in a hotel, if they're gonna bring in air service, they're gonna document that increase or decrease in jobs. Nobody here to ask this question, do they think of it? I'm just kinda looking at anything that I'm sure is.
I'll tell you that is something that we questioned as well, and it's something that we had a very detailed conversation with Mr. Green about. And in many cases, he felt that he could actually hire in some of the measureables that were indicated in the work plan. And so it was brought to his attention, and we did wanna make sure that he wasn't feeling that he was over committing, and his feeling was that he was not.
I might also add, they haven't been waiting for our fifteen thousand before they were, so there were some obvious issues.
You don't need it then, huh? I do have one other thing that I thought was really good. You know, they're gonna do their website, and my one suggestion would be to, on that website, to also list all the businesses, because I think if you're trying to attract businesses, you might wanna see what the competition is as well. I mean, if I'm a business wanting to move to a new town, I'd like to know what the other businesses are there. So that's just a suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the one-year contract to the Collin County Economic Development Council in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Move the second, further discussion? Hearing all those voters say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passed, thank you. All right, do you have a question?
The only thing else besides normal activities that I wanted to report is I had the opportunity to go to the dedication ceremony of the skate park. And Cory was there, and represented this from the road, and family members, and the young man that tragically died during that original accident. And it was just a very nice ceremony, beautiful plaque, and I wanna thank Parks and Rec for helping with a lot of hard work to make that come together.
Well, I had the pleasure of attending the celebration of ninety-year-olds and older at the City Community Center recently. It's just very pleasant to be there with them. I knew a number of them. I'm certain a number of them as well. Just as kind of, ninety-year-olds can have a, you really enjoyed yourself, it's good too. Oh, Dee, you're up there, isn't she? Thank you for really well putting her in there. And the oldest of which was one hundred and four. And if I say I also had the, I just always enjoy the opportunity for the Memorial Day activities, and had a chance to go to the Patrick Joseph House Memorial Day event held at Desi Reed Swartz's house, former bed and breakfast, is well-attended, and it's just way cool to honor and embrace, and those that probably still do, those who are fast away.
Member.
Couple of things, I will be gone from June fourth through the tenth, so I will be missing the UAC and our workshop as well. And so just wanted to let council know that. And the other thing, well, two other things. I know, like I said, I came out that plan, if we could schedule it for a future meeting, I'd have to add, make sure that it got added to future agendas at some point. I hope council would do that. And I know Dale brought up the water issue, the fact that we are continuing to get more and more into a drought situation, if we can get an update on that, I'd appreciate that.
We can provide the council with an update. We've also been in discussions with Detroit and internally, and we'd be glad to provide the council with an update.
I just wanted to report briefly that the committee working with Victoria is continuing to meet. I think we originally had thought we were gonna meet on July night, and I think that we're probably gonna be delaying that for a couple of months. Have we gotten any more information?
Oh, yes, I did have a call in to the city manager in Victoria. Apparently we got our wires crossed, and it's set up for this Friday. And we will be talking about a date potentially in September for that joint meeting. And we started putting together the joint, and we'll be providing that to the council in the future for a session.
Follow up to Brad's comments, Brad, journalists, if you would, follow me, the best, I guess, need to vote tonight, too, if you have.
Yeah, we can just.
But I would, I would tell you that I had a very positive conversation with the executive director of the tourism in Victoria, who's a part of the conversation with this, all of you, who has been very involved with our dialogue between our two communities anyway. They have gotten a vote on the mayor of Victoria. I, we have pushed that, he has the very large network, and he has put on his letter twice in the last four days to have his vote for us. But I have to know that that dialogue is continuing on several others.
I did vote today, and we have a lot more votes than we've ever received before, but we're still three thousand votes behind Chattanooga.
Right now, just two thousand two hundred.
For who that?
Yeah? Okay, this is my first council meeting back since returning from Japan, and I brought a number of gifts that we will give, present to the city. The first gift that I have is the city mascot, his name is Mutsu. Mutsu, you can see Mutsu on here. Today is his birthday, I'm told, and I thought I'd look to see what the, what the information about the birthday, Mutsu, the word Mutsu is Japanese for June. The word Su, T S U, is the Japanese word for second, or two, so June second is today, so this is, this is their mascot's birthday, so we'll give that to the city manager's office. You could display that somewhere. When we visited Tanahue High School, we were also given this, this wooden, I think it's a woman of some sort, that it evidently represents good luck. So we received that from the high schoolers. The mayor, during the actual twentieth anniversary, presented to us this, it's a couple of Japanese holy apples meaning for each other, which is to signify a friendship, which was the primary focus of the, of the visit to Mutsu. And along with that, we also exchanged flags. So we took a Port Angeles flag, and in return, they gave us a flag from Mutsu. Get it uploaded here. Turn it upside down, just wait. And that's, that's the flag with the logo, the flag from Mutsu, Japan. So there is a group coming in October, a number of students, they usually come every October, and I'm hopeful that we'll have this flag available to greet them outside of city hall when they arrive. Anyway, it was, it was a great, it is a parliamentary form of government, so they have opposing parties that sit, chase each other like if you were to go to Parliament in British Columbia and see that occur. And they meet four times a year, but when they meet, they meet for a week at a time. So it's, it's a very intense time. And if anybody cares, I also have a copy of the program from the twentieth anniversary banquet that we went to that was sponsored by the bear. I don't know, Councilmember, if you had, whether you've given a quarter or not, this, it was, they were very gracious and welcoming to the retired delegation, the two students that we took from Port Angeles High School, spent time in their host families, with their host families, as well as their, what they spent Friday in class at Tanahue High School. One funny story that I can relate, the kids wanted to go to Disneyland outside of Tokyo, literally second act, they were in Tokyo. And so we left the Museum of Science and took them to the train station so they could take the train out to Disneyland, what we had not anticipated, what they had not anticipated, was also rush hour. And the trains during rush hour are stacked in there like sardines. They literally push people into the trains to get as many people as possible. And they said they were standing with their hands at their sides, as one person with me, you know, all the, they had quite a right, and they went out, their first amusement ride was on the train, just getting there. So with that, I present this to the city for display. Again, we had a wonderful time, and look forward to seeing the folks in October when they come to visit us again.
That's great. Do we have a mascot here in PA?
Who's that?
Do we have a mascot?
You gave them a comic Shannon, they were very appreciative of that, and the artist also created a craft, a starfish, and so we presented that to the deputy, or to the president of the assembly, and somebody else had a copy of the art. Lots of gift giving when we go to one of these, not a lot of value to them, but it's just very important, that you give chopsticks and candy, and fans, all those things that I'm glad we went, and I think they were very happy to have us, it was a good experience.
I, too, and others, how was the food feeling?
Pretty Asian.
Excellent, lots of the, the banquet, it just, they took us to the, we were touring the schools and the different public facilities, we had lunch with junior high, at the junior high school, it was a school lunch, and we had Mutsu, miso soup, and rice, and a salad, and the seafood dish, and you're eating with chopsticks, so, so it's, you know, when the first course is soup, you just, you have to figure it out, and one, one kernel of rice is all I can say on my job stick. So it was wonderful. They, but the banquet was dinner, celebration dinners, they had a variety of food, and it did turn it off.
We had, we had a lot of variety of various types of Asian food. That's variety. City manager report?
We only have one item this evening, and that's in your packet, and that was the letter of support requested by the council regarding the grant for, in support of the grant for electric chargers, certainly left peninsula, specifically their Olympic National Park, and that was signed by Deputy Mayor Downey, and it did get out. And that's all we have.
Were you going to give us a quick update of the one, or is that going to be later?
We'll bring that back, and then after the council may give you more conference, I'll take.
Okay, there's none of the business. Thank you all for having me, your chair.